Okay. I've never banked the album before. But it is seven o'clock, so we're gonna get started. We, our chairperson, Justin Ham, is working at school tonight, so in Lexington they had to stay later, believe it till seven, so problems come in far away. So we're gonna skip the chairperson's report and move straight to the superintendent's report.
So administrative regulation 65, 651.1 requires a superintendent to approve all field trips over 75 miles. I've approved the Maynard High School band trip to the Great East Festival in Springfield, Mass. on May 18th, 2018. According to regulation, I have to provide the school committee with the details of, you know, that we're, that I've approved them, which I'm doing tonight, and I did in addition provide you with some of the details. And this is a competition that our students do very well at every year, so we're, I know we're all wishing them well, but I just wanted to notify you that I approved that field trip. Also, some of the students who were at the last school committee meeting who presented the Leading the Nation campaign, they attended the first Massachusetts Leading the Nation kickoff event at the State House with Mr. Ogden and I, and that was last Thursday, April 5th. At that event, in the great hall, we saw the town of Maynard flag flying with all the other city and town flags, which was pretty neat to see Maynard represented at the State House. And we got to see the swearing in of the new commissioner of education, Jeff Riley, which was pretty neat to be part of that. But what was really neat was that there was a lot of, it was a celebration of 25 years of education reform, and so there were a lot of politicians, past and present, who were advocating for the budget review commission recommendations to be implemented. And so it was really a very high-level political discussion that was powerful, powerful for all of our students to be part of. And of course, they always, as always, our students represent Maynard well wherever we go, and they did, they showed great character there as well. I did provide a couple mementos that were at the event for our school committee members, Leading the Nation, celebrating student success 2018. So these were some of the mementos that were given out, and I got some for our school committee members to be proud of the, you know, services we provide to our students. And that is my superintendent's report.
Okay. So next up is the student representative's report, although I don't see Maggie and Sophie.
They're presenting soon.
Oh, good, they're presenting the senior project.
So next up then is citizen comments.
So for those of you who don't know me, I am Meg Sullivan. I'm the president of the Maynard Education Association. And on February 6th of this year, the bargaining members of the MEA and the bargaining members of the school committee, which I realize are not present tonight, came to an agreement during mediation. Together, we agreed to a teacher's contract that, among other things, had increased specials at Green Meadow, created opportunity for collaboration between teachers, and provided a 2% cost of living adjustment. The MEA bargained in good faith with an expectation that when we shook hands on February 6th, that we could take the school committee at their word. We bargained in good faith. If the school committee bargained in good faith and can be trusted at their word, they need to demonstrate that by signing the agreement we reached on February 6th, which at this point goes unsigned. We also expect that they would apply the language and the cost of living adjustment faithfully, as it has been over the past decade and more. As a taxpayer in Maynard, I would rather we spend our money on the things that directly impact our students, like teachers and coaches and scheduling things, rather than on lawyers who can fight arguments for as long as they want to. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, no, I have another question. I'm not, I don't wanna comment on that, I have my own thing to say. Sorry. I'm not. Hey, I'm Victoria Brown-Stevens. I've been a Maynard resident for about 25 years, and about half of that time I've been a paraprofessional, and most of that time in sixth grade. And today I wanna talk about a teacher, an ELA teacher, named Kelly Conklin, who just learned she will be laid off yesterday. You know, as a paraprofessional, I have front row seat to the, to the teachers more than any other adult, and Kelly is really the best ELA teacher I've ever seen in sixth grade in the last 10 years that I've been there. She is excellent. She is engaging, she has a method to all her teaching. She teaches literature, she teaches writing in a way I've never seen it taught so effectively. And I just want, I, I hope you guys can find a way to keep her. I know you're tied up with the budget, and you have certain ways of, you know, some person has to move here and there, and I don't understand any of that. I'm just telling you that Kelly Conklin is a super teacher, and you should try to keep her. The second thing I wanna say is the way she was told of her layoff was really, I feel very wrong. She was taken out of her class unannounced, a sub was plugged in there, she was taken to a meeting and told she would be laid off, you know, she would not be returning next year, with maybe a small glimmer of hope, I don't know. And, you know, that to me was disrespectful of, of her and her class, you know, these 20 students are left with a sub suddenly like that, and she's just, she's a professional, she was back in school today. You know, I think other people might have called in sick, but, you know, I think, I just think we are supposed to be a kind and empathetic community that's on our logo, and I think we should treat our professionals better than we have been, the administrators in this, the system. I don't know why, there's an adversarial relationship, but I think there is one, and I think you guys should take some steps to, to turn it around. Thanks.
I really appreciate the fact, all of us appreciate the fact that so many of you are here tonight, and we have similar struggles in the town, as everyone knows, our, everyone complains about our tax rate, that it's so high, and everybody's, you know, trying to pull for the dollars. We have been working with the selectmen all year, very constructively, Mary Merchant and myself, on the budget subcommittee meetings that we've had, and have, feel like we've really been forthright with them as far as the needs go and that. I would ask any teacher, anyone in this room actually, but especially the teachers that live in Maynard, to come to this board of selectmen's meeting next Tuesday, the 17th, because we're gonna be back on the agenda again. There is some potential additional funds that will be available at that time, or we were told, and we just would really appreciate support to try and, you know, we do have a gap for between the, the funds that we were given and the, the level service funds that, that we need just to keep things the way that they are, and we're just trying to squeeze that gap, so I really hope that you all show up at board of selectmen's meeting.
I'd also like to make a comment that this is probably the hardest week for a superintendent and principal to have to give out these letters, especially to teachers who we admire and respect immensely. And that process that you discussed is done with union representatives in the room, so it's, it's a shared process that's cumbersome, that neither of us like to do, so it's not an adversarial relationship, we're doing it together. But it's a process that we have to do by contractual obligation, and it's the right thing to do, 'cause if the town doesn't give us enough money, we have to let the teachers know so that they can go find another job somewhere else early enough while there are still jobs. So it's actually the respectful thing to do, to give them a heads up. And the other thing I'll say though is that we are doing everything we can to keep some of these outstanding educators, and even today, we were able to, I was able to get a resend letter for, for one teacher, but I can't say who. By tomorrow, that teacher will know, 'cause we're really not supposed to talk about employee issues in public, but I do want you to know that of all the letters that went out, we already have a resend letter that I shared with the union president this afternoon, because we were able to figure out a way to bring somebody back. So we're working hard together, the union administration, I just wanna make that point. And we are gonna be bringing back somebody, and I think everybody will be pleasantly surprised.
I'll just, I'll just chime in, and this is, we have, we have the budget, it's an agenda item later on, so I'll probably reiterate that then as well for folks who might come in a little bit late. But just to piggyback on what Mary Bradley has already said, we had, just, just to maintain level service for next year, we could ask the town, the budget we submitted months ago, we had asked for a 7.7% increase for the fiscal year, and that was just to add anything, that was just to keep us at current services, current levels of staffing, and their recommended increase is 5.14%, so that, that initially left us with a deficit of $374,000. Since that time, due to some things that were promised at the, at the negotiations table, the, the deficit we're looking at right now is $466,517. And so we, as, as Mary Bradley said, we're hopeful Tuesday night that the selectmen, we've asked if they find any additional savings, whether from, we had heard that health insurance was negotiated at a lower rate than the town expected, so there's some savings there. We've also asked if there's any additional money that comes in, for example, from chapter 70 funds, we've asked that all those funds go to the school, but they're gonna listen to residents and, you know, encourage folks you know who live in Maynard. If you live in Maynard, we'd appreciate you showing up at that meeting. I think the more they hear from people, that we want that money going towards the schools, you know, the, the easier that decision is for them to make. What it does mean for Maynard is, is, you know, we're, we're working with a limited pot of money, and everybody has different priorities within town, and it does mean that we have to forego some other services, so hard decisions. I know the selectmen will be making hard decisions, but it's important to have citizens representing there, and have your voices there too, so they can hear what we, what we value most.
I would also add that we've been trying to make clear to them as we've been going to board of select meetings and at the budget subcommittee, I've been attending to each of them, even though not on that committee, but I wanna clearly be there with the board of selectmen, the subcommittee, and the finance committees, subcommittee, and all three came together. And it was actually, it was, I think people heard each other more and understood a little more of like what's going on with the whole picture of the town, and hopefully more of the position that we've been in with the schools. And one thing that we made sure to be clear about is, look, the sooner we can know what's going on with the money and anything you can give us, we need to, we need to get it as early as possible, so we don't need to, 'cause by a certain point, we have to, to be fair, send out layoff letters to give people a sense of this could be coming down the pipe, they need to know, so they can look for, so we let them know, look, we don't, we don't wanna go through any of that, we prefer, we need to have the money as soon as we know, as soon as we can. And of course, the meeting at which they'll let us know if we have anything additional is Tuesday. So this is by far the hardest part of what any of us do, and I'm, I'm sorry that we're in this position, we're not alone in this in Maynard, but, I'm sorry. In any case, so, we are taking it very seriously, and honestly, we wanna be adding things, not cutting anyone.
And, you know, to add to the, just to, to look at the big picture, some of you might know this information already, but since the fiscal year 2013, if we had gotten every year what we'd asked for from the town just to maintain level service, we would have $2.3 million more than we have now. So Maynard used to be, you know, it used to be above the state average in per people's spending, and right now, we're a little bit below. And so it's, as tough as it is every year, we are trying to encourage the town, hey, let's look at the big picture. If every year we get level service, then we don't end up in these situations where we're, you know, we're making these terrible, terrible cuts. We also met with, along with Justine St. John, we met a couple months ago with Representative Kate Hogan, we talked about challenges the state is facing, for example, with, with a couple of transportation, there are monopolies that transportation companies have, where they won't really bid against each other. There are some issues with, you know, like, we were asking, like, can there be more oversight of private schools, students that we send kids to out of district, is there oversight of those tuitions? Because there are so many things that kind of hold back the district, things that we have no control over, but, but just pay attention, you know, to what's going on with the state government, to encourage people to reach out, reach out to other politicians too, that we have more control over these things. Any other citizens' comments?
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, this is the first meeting I've ever been to, my name's Casey, I'm really nervous. So about two weeks ago, I had sent an email to the superintendent and both principals of the elementary school, my son is a first grader there, asking about how we are addressing school violence. I received an email about Tide Pods, when that became a thing and kids were eating them. I got an email about a Netflix show about teenagers and self-harm. I have heard nothing about how we're dealing with school violence, school shootings, nothing. 11 days went by after my initial email, I sent a second email, and Mary Beth called me, we had a discussion on the phone. But I guess I wonder why that information isn't being shared out with parents? And while it's really helpful to hear from the principal of the school that my son goes to, it'd also be nice to know how all of the other schools are handling it, because it's not isolated. So I'd love to know what resources are available for students who are experiencing personal issues or traumas or anything like that. You know, I think the prevention is the vital part, how we deal with the crisis when, if the crisis presents itself is the other piece, but what are we doing to prevent these things?
So I'm sorry that I didn't see that email, for some reason it must, maybe it went into, you know, the trash bin or whatever, sometimes things get missed. I'm glad that Mary Beth was able to get back in touch with you to give you some pieces of it. And actually, we do have a safety committee that's been working on a lot of initiatives. Some of the proactive initiatives you talked about as far as the types of training we're doing for students, and we actually added guidance staff this, in last year's budget, even though we had to cut, we made hard choices as a school committee, because we understand the needs for social-emotional, and we have been doing a lot of professional development for staff on that. We should be doing a lot more, and I recently attended with our school resource officer, the, it's a conference for resource officers to see what other resources we can get. So if you could leave your name or email address with Colleen, that would be great, and then I can get you more information and share that with you. But it's something that's very much on our radar, it's very important to us, and we have had a really good safety committee that's been working for several years now on trying to improve these needs.
We did ask, I have a question, I know we did have, when we, when we made the move to Alex, wasn't there a parent, there was a parent education, and I, and I wonder if that's something that we do every year, you know, beginning of the year? I felt like, having been on a school committee for a couple of years, when we made the move towards Alex, I know, and we had a presentation that members of that safety team came and did, and it made us feel, I think, pretty good about what was in place, but I, but I also hear what you're saying about what's happening to prevent, like, that's more crisis response.
Right.
Well, I talked to my friend, who's a teacher at the middle school, and she told me about Alex's, didn't Mary Beth? I said, "I wouldn't know that unless I called and somebody told me," like, why, why doesn't everyone know that?
Well, I can also tell you the state is, we're working with the state on surveys to get information from students so that we can figure out how to more proactively deal with that. So that's just one of several initiatives that we're working on right now. Just this week, they're working on surveys with students, so it's on everybody's radar, it's really important, and, you know, I definitely wanna get back to you with a broader array of what's, what's going on.
Well, I do think, I wonder what is weird, so we've been looking at a couple of things in relation to communication, and making sure that it's easier to find some of these things, and there's like communications subcommittees, there's a lot of this. So hopefully, having this in mind, that's one of the pieces, is we're redesigning the website, and that they'll be able to have that section, because that's clearly on the forefront of people's minds for a lot of reasons. So that would help with being able to find the information, and if you wanna be there have something recorded, it's opposed to having to do something every year, because the information could still be recorded or in some way available online with the meeting line, where people could then ask questions if they have it. But does that respond to some of those?
So can I just clarify, just for you, because you don't know me, I'm the guidance counselor, one of the guidance counselors at Fowler, and I just wanted to clarify that on what Dr. Girardi said, we moved some guidance to Green Meadow, but it was taken from Fowler. So I just wanna be perfectly clear, because we have one and a half guidance counselors here for the whole school, and there's a halftime move to Green Meadow, but it wasn't added to budget in this state nature, just wanted you to have the information.
Well, technically, it was added, 'cause we cut even more in the past, but then it was shifted also, so.
We had, yeah.
The year before, we, it was added from the budget from the year before. So the other thing is, we have had, so, we'll, you know, we'll get back to that, and we'll try to get that information out.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay, and next up are Maddie and Katie, talking about their.
So I'd like to introduce them. Maddie Petasso and Katie Wilkins had a meeting with Michelle, Jennifer, and I to discuss their senior project for an idea for some new audio equipment for the Maynard High School Theater. And we met with them, and Michelle talked a lot about the capital planning projects that we do and the capital projects list. We also explained that that's a multi-year list, and it's, it's so that the town can try and fund things in a priority order. However, oftentimes, for smaller projects like this, if they're funding one big project and they have enough money for a smaller project, it gets moved up on the list. So Michelle said, you know, after we heard the wonderful presentation the students did, that we were, you know, we would definitely be putting it on the capital projects list, but they did wanna share with us, and I shared with the school committee in your package, they had two quotes, so I think they kinda wanted to get an idea of whether the school committee, you know, you wanted to tell us the difference between the two quotes and whether the school committee would, which one they would prefer to put forward. So if you wanna come on up and tell us all about it?
Sure. So basically, we have like two plans, that one's less expensive and not as compatible with some other stuff, and then one that is also compatible in the gym, which can be used for like other presenters, 'cause I know, like, in the past, we had like Chris Heron come and like speak in the gym, but there wasn't like any sort of like mic or anything that he could use that would be, I guess, more comfortable, so that's just briefly talking about it, but.
Yeah, so the two different types are, one of them would have, so our main issue was, I'll start off, was the mics just like weren't working at all, and we had, at the beginning of this year, we had basically no working mics, a few, but we had a lot of roles in our musical that needed microphones, and we didn't have nearly enough. And we had a temporary solution this year, we bought some cheap $20 just microphones for your face, that we got some of the money from our class and, for our class gift and stuff like that. But that's not gonna work for a long-term solution, so this is what, this is our more of a long-term solution for that, and, yeah.
Yeah.
And the difference in the quotes is the quality, or is it the?
It's the quality and the quantity, I guess, because with the more expensive one, obviously, like I said, it works in the gym, and then you're getting more equipment that is gonna be more long-lasting.
Yeah.
And for the quotes, there's four microphones included.
Yep.
That could be like, the number, that number could be raised or lowered depending on how much, however much can be spent.
How many do you see?
Um, we got 10 of the cheaper ones this year, which worked well. I'm not gonna ask for like that many, but, I don't know, whenever, anything can help, I think would be great.
Yeah, on the quote, we only had four, just to start off.
There's four on there, yeah.
Yep.
So the more expensive one is more equipment and more, it can be installed in the gym as well for presentations that happen in there. And we can also use the, the either option in the auditorium, of course, for the musical, the play, or any other presenters, or like auditorium usages.
Especially around this time where senior projects are being presented, and your people are having panels, like I know today, Kyle Morgan had his, and obviously, like, having a mic on a table isn't the worst thing in the world, but having like wireless gives them more options to like educate.
So what kind of warranty needs come with?
Um, I'm not exactly sure about the warranties. I mean, I have like a business card for like the guy that helped us do this, so if you wanna.
You can definitely ask him about that as well.
The other things with, with heavy-use items like microphones and stuff, really, we just have to put them, kinda like computers, on a five-year replacement cycle. So I think that putting this on the capital plan right now is, makes sense, and then making sure that it doesn't go away, that every five years, we put it, 'cause the, the way the capital plan works, they have multi-years, so that they can plan out in the future. But these are high-use items, you know, microphones and PA systems are very high-use, so.
And another thing is, the part that would need to be replaced is just the microphone, so that's on there, and we can show you after which part that is, but it's the one that's $185 per, just the mic. We wouldn't need to be replacing the entire, 'cause this is the whole entire system, basically, like the boxes that go on.
The racks, the transmitters. The transmitters don't need to be replaced as much, because with mics, you have a lot of wear and tear, 'cause they're on your face, people are moving, people need to move for different parts and stuff.
So it wouldn't be the whole cost that would need to be replaced every five years, it would just be the actual headsets, I think.
Yep.
So if we were to approve either of them, most asked, would you get them to turn around?
Well, we'd have to put it on the capital plan, and then, and we, we would talk to the town to see what they could do, if they could move it up or not on the priority, so.
So it's not something that's gonna happen?
Well, it didn't happen before the play. The play was the big need, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they made do.
And we did get a slew of that.
They made do with what they had, and they did well, but, but this would be, now we're doing it for the future.
Yeah.
When, when you said it could be, could also be used in the gym, would that, would it just be, does that require any additional install or change, or is it, do you know?
I don't think so. I think the costs are also on there for installation.
For installation.
And I wasn't sure.
I think that goes along with what it would be to also install it in the gym for the second cost.
Did you get the quotes, these access company?
Um, well, originally, our goal was just to replace the mics with the stuff that we already had.
So we called multiple places that sold these types of microphones, and a lot of them, our biggest problem was the compatibility with the system we have now. We would tell them like the type of mic pack we had, they would be, they, a lot of them were like, "I've never even heard of that." So this one's a more well-known type of equipment, but, yeah.
Is there other companies that provide the same equipment, though?
Um, most likely.
There is probably, this is just the best option we had, 'cause we knew him personally.
Yeah, he's somebody that I work with, so when I reached out, yeah.
And we had experience with both the high school plays and this equipment.
Yeah, and his company also supplies, like, during the plays, sometimes we have like hanging mics and floor mics, and his company supplies that, so, and like Ms. Blanchard will like pay, had it like leased just for that year, so.
So just to clarify, so we, but we do hope it tonight to have a recommendation from us with regards to which option?
Right, and we could always get more quotes, and we could, Michelle will speak to that.
Only because, and I didn't think about this when we met, but because if the, one of the options is close to $10,000, chapter 30B law says that you have to request three, so you have to provide three quotes.
Sure.
So even if it's like, this is the best one, and we get that, you just have to have some sort of email chain or letters requesting the quotes. You actually don't even have to receive them back, but you have to at least request them at the company, so.
Yep, that's definitely something we can do.
Before we, before you guys, or make, whatever recommendation, before I have to bring it to the capital planning, I will need those emails, and I'm sorry for not, thank you for saying that, I just wasn't thinking of when we were talking the other day.
No, it's fine, it's definitely something that we can do.
I think it's, I'm so happy you're doing it, thank you, I mean, I think it's something that, that will benefit the school beyond, you know, your time, your time here as well. So maybe we can wait to see, I, I support it, I love putting it on the capital plan, obviously, like you heard us talking about the budget and the contract.
Yep, yeah.
Something we have to plan for down the road, but I, to get the other quotes, if Mr. Tackles will do that.
Sure.
We appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is policy number 10, it's a new policy for procurement procedures for the child nutrition program, and this is a second for you. And this is a second reading.
Right, so being the second reading, we're recommending that the policy as provided to you tonight would be approved. And we did review it at the last school committee.
The motion? Motion to accept the mayor's proposed procurement for the child nutrition program. Seconded, seconded, and voted. I didn't understand all of the dark. Do you still have just four? You have to put the four, because this ties into the, okay, you're in writing, there's three charts.
Yes.
So we still have four.
People bidding?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we had four, I believe that came, they came for the mandatory walkthrough, four different companies. And I've heard from actually all four of them asking questions on the hour piece. Like, I believe they're all planning on bidding, but the bid's due the 23rd, so, of April. But this was for, this, I know it plays into it, but this piece was for when we had our administrative procurement review a month ago.
Did we vote, did you vote, did you guys vote to that?
We did.
Oh, okay, I missed it.
And then Mary wanted to discuss, and I was given a suggestion when they gavelled on her. I was saying. And Mary was very quick to get to that.
All right, well, thank you for picking up the slack in my absence. Forgive me, it's going to take me a minute to clear my thoughts coming out of our first night of Alice training at Lexington High School. So it's been kind of a heavy afternoon and evening, so. Looks like we just wrapped number eight, so, no, it's number seven, so we're going to number eight, which is our first reading on the home hospital instruction policy.
Actually, this is the second.
Oh, it's second, okay.
So we did review it at the last meeting and so the documents that you received in preparation, we'd asked that you would approve this as well.
Perfect.
And this was a result of the CPR review that we realized that we needed to add a new policy around home hospital instruction, so.
Right, so when we looked at it two weeks ago, it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the policy.
Motion to approve policy number 526, home hospital student instruction.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Pretty straightforward, so all in favor? Thank you, motion passes 4-0. All right, let's go ahead and just take the agenda items in order. We'll go to number nine, which would be the fiscal year 19 budget. So Mary and Maryam, looking at you for budget subcommittee. And then we'll circle back to the minutes towards the end of the meeting.
So just to, we spent some time talking about the budget a little earlier, but if you had any, we got to do the agenda items. So anyone who has just walked in perhaps a little later, so we requested a 7.29% increase initially for the next fiscal year to keep up with level service. The town recommended a 5.14% increase. So initially, we had a deficit of $374,000 and now because of some things that were agreed to at the negotiations table, we're looking at the number 466,517. We shared with the audience a little bit earlier that Tuesday night's board of selectmen meeting, one of the things we'll be discussing is if there are any additional funds that might be sent towards the schools. So I would encourage people who are concerned and who would like to see that gap, strong to come to that meeting and let your voices be heard with the board selection.
I'm getting tired of hearing us, so we need a lot for them to hear from other people.
Yeah, and Mary, I know you copied me on the recent email communication to get us onto the agenda and some of the subsequent replies, so thank you for the work that you continue to do. I'm cautiously optimistic, given the response of one of the selectmen.
Actually, I've heard of them too.
Okay.
They're more than around two today.
Okay.
Yeah, I give you a lot of credit for all the, just you keep reaching out and keep asking and keep.
Yeah, I would also reiterate what Beth Lynn said, which was, this year, there's been more communication with the joint committees, the budget subcommittee, our budget subcommittee met with the budget subcommittee, the board of selectmen and the FinCom. Many, many meetings have gone on, so kudos to the school committee for advocating so hard to try and improve our situation. This is going to be the fourth year where we've been less than level service budget. And as Mary mentioned, when we did the statistics, if we had had level service budget every year, our budget would be 2 million higher.
2.3.
2.3, to be exact.
Counting.
So I do appreciate all the work the school committee has put into advocating for our schools.
I will say, the one thing that came out very clearly is that as far as the town as a whole, that they, I don't know what their actual revenue is, but they don't actually have enough revenue on the town side as a whole as currently projected to be able to fund the service gap. Like, they would have to take all of the additional revenue that they have for, that should go to any and all needs in the town and put it all towards the schools and they still want to be able to fill the whole 7.29 that we originally requested.
Right.
So that's part of, it's a pickle. But there are ways that we feel like we couldn't afford and talk, and talk through other ways to try to look at this and including what else is happening for the town and making these tough decisions and the priorities and what goes longer without getting taken care of if we put that money towards the schools, for instance.
It's also very important to continue changing the tone of the conversation. I know that the acting town administrator was kind of blunt in saying it's an insignificant amount of money in his eyes, but the reality of our current situation is, is that no sum of money is insignificant right now.
I said that in one of your chats.
Yes.
So it won't be very much in depth, so any more money is going to help just squeeze that gap.
Absolutely.
I don't know if I can ask you a question. In the past, there's been a public sort of spreadsheet about the specific cuts and I know that you're asking people to go to the board of selectmen on Tuesday. And sometimes I feel as though when the message gets out over specific cuts, that that's when people see it reflected in their own children's lives or people that they know. And so I'm wondering if there's a plan to put that information out in public or if that's.
I think once all of the layoff letters have gone out, and we still have a couple more to go, by next week for that meeting, then we can have those very accurate descriptions of these class sizes are going to go up, this administrative position's going to go away, this program's going to go away. So we'll, I think the next meeting is when that's going to be unveiled, so it's a good point.
Close set Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
So Tuesday's when, at the board's elected meeting, people could expect to find out about all this?
Specifically.
I'd say it's a possibility, Meg. We need to talk as a team about that. We also need to figure out sort of what the message is, you know? It's, the budget process is a constantly changing living number, you know, based on revenue to the town, chapter 70 is coming in from the Commonwealth. You know, I just read an article that said that the April tax collections are exceeding expectations at the state level, so that might impact some of the chapter 70 funding that comes along further in the budget year. Because the reality is, is like, all of the funds are not released to the cities and towns at one time. So, you know, we do our estimates based on the information that we're given, but the reality is, the information's constantly changing. So, yeah, we may decide as a board that we're ready to start the conversation of what positions are potentially impacted, but there's a lot of other things that play in. You know, there's the protection language in the contract that says that, you know, the professional staff has to be notified by a certain date and we owe it to our professional staff to have conversations with them before we publicize certain pieces of, excuse me, certain pieces of information. So, you know, we'll figure it out and once we know what that plan is, we'll certainly communicate it out. Any other updates on the budgetary process or anything to contribute?
Just to add to what you said, I think we did discuss, Meg, whether or not, like what I shared, I think we've been holding out hope this year that we would be in a different situation than the last couple of years. And part of our reason, I think, for wanting to wait is to see what happens in that conversation with the selectmen and to see, because it's such a painful conversation to have with the community and start prioritizing and people are fighting for what's, you know, this teacher or that teacher, as they should. You know, I appreciate the passion that people convey when they have those conversations. I think we're hopeful that perhaps some will come back and that it's kind of a different conversation. We're not looking at all the things that are on that spreadsheet right now. We might still have a conversation about, you know, priorities, but I think at least we know we're incorporating some of those things back.
Can I just ask, when will you kind of know for sure?
So I think the next meeting, board's selectmen meeting, will know for sure what their intentions are as far as going for warrants and how much money is going to come to the schools. Last year, at the annual town meeting, I believe, an amendment was made and we did get an extra amount of sum there. So indeed, at the very last minute, it could be the annual town meeting, which was unusual. That almost never happens, but last year was the first time where they actually came up with more money at the town meeting. But I will have a better idea Tuesday as to what their intentions are. Because what happened was, the town administrator gives his recommended budget and until the board of selectmen make their decisions and write the warrants as to what they're going to fund, they take over the budget. It's their budget and so they can make these decisions. So that's why we're hoping at this meeting, if we're advocating for some of those monies that we have heard have come in that, to the town, then maybe the board of selectmen can change the town administrator's recommendation and we could have more money.
And I don't, I was, I was just going to add, our conversation the past, the past year in our joint meetings has been, listen, we have done what we can, tried to be frugal and to, we made cuts we can and we said, anything, like, anything on that list is not acceptable, any of the cuts we're looking at. And we've shared that, but I think even if you don't know what's on the list this year, for those people who've seen the past couple of years, those things that we've had to cut, they can talk about as teachers, you can talk about the impact it's had on the schools.
I'm not saying you've had an easy job. Not that you're doing a bad job. I just, at kind of, at this point in the process, last year, as a parent, I received multiple handouts about, and it even, if I recall, gave different options. Like, these are different things that are being considered, reducing specialty free meter to point, whatever it was. You know, and so, I mean, the only thing we have tonight is about the microphones.
Yeah, and that's a conscious decision on our part, Shabon, because the dialogue is constantly changing.
Well.
We made a decision to not turn up the temperature on this conversation until we have more information. So you may be feeling the absence of information and I apologize for that, because this year is different from last year, which was different from the year before. The diligence is being done.
So will this be on a future school committee?
Yes.
And will that meeting be publicized?
Absolutely.
And so will all?
All of our meetings are publicized.
Which, I mean.
Yeah, so.
I know they're all listed as public meetings, but.
Yeah. I think it was a conscious decision, we've always tried to work diplomatically with the town, but they got upset when we had all those meetings. So that's why it's been a conscious decision to try and work with them. And the reality is, what's been funded so far is more than we got last year. So the diplomacy has worked to some degree, but just not enough. And so that's why we're still holding out for diplomacy and trying to do things in a, you know.
Well, there's, because of the conversations that we've had to date, there is more of a sense of, we might actually, they might actually get more of what's going on and be able to give us a little. But it just turns out, we actually need a lot this year to stay level funded. It's not the highest it's been, I think 9% was the highest one year.
Yep.
But it's second highest in the last five, four, five years.
Well, when you have four years of less than level service funding, then it compounds itself, so now it makes it even harder to keep up.
Exactly.
We don't want to necessarily have a worst-case list if we're going to be able to read some of the.
Yeah, if we don't even need to go there. We don't, yeah.
Yeah, so we'd rather have more defined information versus giving out false information at this point. It's hearing more people than we need to, you know? Every time that we've had an opportunity, we've been involved with the selectmen, we've cited the fact that we have to read the notices by May first. And then of course, it makes the teachers, anybody that's received a place, even if we're saying, we're just doing this worst-case scenario, of course you have to go up and start helping for a job. There are so many great teachers, I mean, you know, my thought you've had to, but it seems like we have to keep growing that up and I totally understand how much it does have a negative impact.
So the bottom line is, Tuesday, we're going to find out whether or not we'll get anything beyond what has been recommended, right?
That's the hope, yeah.
Okay. Well, we don't know how that conversation's going to.
Exactly.
Discuss it. We'll discuss it.
With the air quotes.
And then we will be having future meetings.
Thank you.
Where we will need to look at whatever would need to be cut.
Thank you. I don't know if I can speak right now, but of course, I get what you're saying, we're both not putting out handouts and not doing that like we did last year. However, being on a first-grade team, two of my colleagues got pink slips today and were blindsided. So I get where you're coming from, but yet you cause a complete awkwardness in schools because people are blindsided. And now nobody knows what's tomorrow going to run out. Yesterday was Fowler, today's Ray Miller. So I get it, but Dr. Giardi, you're talking about open communication. I've been at teacher leading meetings, school council meetings, I've asked repeatedly about sections, about people losing jobs and everything's about the same, everything's about the same, not once has anybody answered my question. Everybody has made its own one. It's going to be fine. It's not. And I think it's unfair. Because nobody saw this coming.
I think that, I understand the approach this year, because I certainly recognize how it went last year and that was a tough experience as well in previous years. But I think that if, when the teachers are put as the things that would be cut, I understand how that has an impact on people maybe being more willing to fund the schools if they know that it's going to cut teachers. However, because of protections for the teachers where they have to be notified by a certain date and we want to provide them opportunity, we also put them in a situation where they're looking for other positions and even if we can rescind their letter, that they might end up going somewhere else. And so I wonder if there's ever discussion about perhaps there are other, like, perhaps there's a way to put administrators in some other programs on the budget cuts where you don't have to worry about a program going and finding a new job somewhere, because it's just a program that we might be cutting. Or administrators, perhaps you can have some of those discussions with about, this is what we have to put on there, but it's not necessarily going to happen, where maybe there's not the same protections and I'm not certain of that. But I know with teachers, it's that as soon as you get that letter, it sort of gets you thinking, I don't want to ever go through this situation again and maybe I need to go somewhere else. And so even though we hope to rescind them and that we have had the experiences of where we can rescind them, I know that it affects the teachers who have received those letters and affects the teachers who didn't one year but may get them the next year.
We did make that case, we'll just hit the board of selectmen meeting to say, the sooner you can tell us if we're getting more money, the better, because every year this happens and every year we have teachers who get those letters and then they start to look out and even if money comes back, we might have lost them already. So I totally hear what you're saying. I hate that timeline, I hate the way, I mean, I understand that, like, we can't share the list before teachers know that their jobs are under line and then we're still waiting for a couple to wind out now and you don't want them to find out because it was that call yesterday and it just.
Well, the other thing I would like to add is that, for those of us who have been in education for a long time, in the eight years that I was a teacher, six, every, six, the first six years, I received a pink slip. So it's pretty well-understood by the union that that is the process, but it's really hard on a first-year teacher because it's their first time. That I get. And I don't believe anybody, it's hard for anybody, it's your life, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's your living. But the other thing is, I don't know anybody who has said, everything's going to be fine. We've been at meetings saying, everything isn't fine. We've been very public about that.
February, we got our budget.
We've been saying it at our union roundtables that things aren't fine financially, so again, I think we went to one extreme last year, trying to include everybody so that the board of selectmen could see how many people would show up to meetings and how upset everybody was. This year, we were trying a different tact and it actually worked to our benefit because right now, we still have one more percent than we got last year.
You know what, actually, I mean, it was interesting, I don't know if it ever got posted, but the meeting, we have a town-wide budget meeting, it's by charter that we have it, what is it?
Second Saturday in February.
February. We meet at the library and that's where the town administrator says, here's your recommended budget. So we give our presentation, that, it's kind of odd where it happens, but we gave our presentation saying, here's the number we need, but the same day, we already submitted it, so the town administrator's seen it, but that's the day we find out the recommended percentage. And that would be a great meeting, to have town representation. I always find it odd, it's in the, it's in the library, it wasn't posted the last time I checked on the town website, but it should be posted and that would be a place for people to say, what? You know, because that's, that's the first one year.
That's the first time we know.
So next year, second Saturday in February. Eight thirty, yeah, it's small, it works, so it can't really handle that many people. And it's not televised. I mean, so many meetings are televised. Why is that one not televised?
Okay, moving on. Um, we're going to circle back to the top of the agenda. We're going to go back to agenda item number one, which is just our, our standard business. The minutes from our March 29th meeting. Um, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn from March 29th.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Looked like I remembered the meeting. All right. All in favor? Motion passes four zero. Excellent. I don't really have a chairperson's report tonight. Um, there's a lot that's going on. I know spring sports are launching. Um, the schools are lit up. The parking lots are full every time I go by. Um, there's some really amazing things happening here. Um, I'm sorry I missed the student representative report earlier. There wasn't one tonight. No Olivia? No Sophia? Oh, okay.
Could've spun at something.
Yeah, probably.
The high school was all lit up. I wouldn't be surprised if they were there. All right. So in that case, let's go to number 10, members' comments and questions. That might be a first, Mary. How, how much talking did you do at the beginning of the meeting and what did I miss?
Just congratulating them. I will say that I have been so, so, so impressed by the schools that our seniors are being accepted to this year. I was going to specifically congratulate this year Olivia, but I am just a long way from our, our student body and what they have around.
Absolutely. Um, I know I just got my invite electronically today for the senior project luncheon. Um, I'm going to try and figure out how I can get off work for that. Maybe trade a couple of classes here or there, try to come over for that, because I think that would be a wonderful event to participate in. I had a chance to participate a few years ago when my exchange student Julie participated in the senior project and I absolutely loved it. Um, and you want to talk about the opportunity to just sort of celebrate the work and the learning that's going on at Lexington High School, the senior project and the capstone is, or, excuse me, main or. Sorry. It's going to be like this again in two weeks, because we have night two of ALICE training. So, um, that being said, others? Mary? Beth?
They're going to be thinking something. Open house at Green Meadow, it was Wednesday night.
I was there.
Amazing.
Yeah.
The energy, it was great. I just loved. My kids didn't want to leave their classrooms because they're so excited to show you the things. And, um, the first grade concert this morning was amazing.
Awesome.
A shout out to this place in Kathy.
I, um, I don't know whose decision it was either to put the book fair and the gymnasium this year.
I think this is ours.
It was so much more relaxed and enjoyable and I didn't feel like I was claustrophobic or tripping over anyone. Um, the opportunity to browse, like, it just, it was much more relaxed.
We talked about it and she decided to try something different.
Mm-hmm.
And they set up the, um.
Carols.
Yeah. So she, she had to prep things, but then she didn't have like days of setup to do in the library.
Yep.
And it was more inclusive. Like everyone was there and in there and brought, brought, there was like framed artwork.
The art show was awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. The time and effort just alone to, to frame all of those pieces of art. And also the looks on the kids' faces when they see their artwork framed. That was, that was pretty amazing. So thank you, Green Meadow, for an amazing event last night. That was fantastic. Um, what did you think of, Mary?
The Jazz Cafe.
Oh, that was awesome.
Probably everybody was pretty much there.
Yep.
It was very cool. I had no idea what it was back then. I was.
I liked the four corners stuff, where there was constantly music and you just turned from corner to corner to corner. Yep.
That was great.
Cool.
That, that happened since. Um, I have two things to mention.
What do you got?
One is the Discovery Museum. They have a free speaker series.
Mm-hmm.
Then one in May is, um, a crisis of self-regulation and how to help for kids. Um, and Catherine Reynolds Lewis is an award-winning independent journalist, speaker and author of Good News About Bad Behavior.
Okay.
There is like free light dinner and also free light adult beverages served. Um, so I'm interested. It's a, it's a nice, it's going to be at Congregation Beth O'Levin? I'm not sure if I say it right.
Oh, professional development certificate.
And they do have for $18, you can get some professional type development credit.
Cool. So that was number one. What's your number two?
No, I'm number one. Number two was, um, I had a conversation with a resident about safe routes to school.
Yeah.
And wondering if we could look into that and get an assessment done. Do they do like pre-assessments for Main Street?
Yep.
Fantastic. So I don't know what you think about that and.
We actually implemented it in, in my last district.
Oh, yeah.
So they do a lot of initiatives to see how to create a safer walking and biking environment for your community.
Which kind of works along with the old way Main Street, right?
Yeah. The bike path and the experiment last year with those temporary bike lanes on Main Street near the Pleasant Cafe and then the new food, or the new open table and.
So I was, two people I was talking to, one who had just moved in town a couple years ago and was like, you love that you can walk every, downtown and walk everywhere in Main Street. And then I was talking to, uh, someone who is, lives in Sudbury. It was like, you know, we were driving through, driving through, but they were driving through Main Street and there's a lot of cool stuff going on in Main Street. And I'm like, yes, there is. So, um, any case, uh, you know, I think we played to our strengths here and, um, and I, I.
It's a wonderful city.
And that it's, there's a lot of people realizing just even going through that there's stuff they want to come back and stay for. So I think it'd be very cool to do that. So he, he, we can talk about it later, but I wanted to mention it because it's just a, a nice initiative to be thinking about. Um, and he said he'd be willing to submit this stuff to, we can talk about it.
Sure.
He's probably spoken.
You, you sparked a memory. Um, I think last week I sent out the reminder for the Day on the Hill, April 26th, um, on Beacon Hill in Boston. It's the annual day for MASC to go in and representatives can meet their elected officials and advocate on the grounds of public education. Um, the big initiative this year is obviously initiating, or, um, funding the findings of the Foundation Budget Review Commission and trying to bring education funding back in line with where it was about 25 years ago. Um, because we are definitely lagging significantly on that. So, um, April 26th, if anyone's interested, it's a great opportunity to advocate for public education, sponsored by MASC. Um, you do have to RSVP and there is a registration fee, but it includes a light breakfast, a full lunch and all of the materials for the day, because there's speakers and there's panels and there's all sorts of things. Um, I'm trying to negotiate with my, my supervisor at school to, to get the day so that I can go in and represent Main Street. I'm sorry? Yeah, Dawn and I have been talking about it extensively. Um, so with all the conversations about funding, um, a big piece of that puzzle is the Commonwealth funding us the way that we should be properly funded. Um, so foundation budget is obviously one of those pieces. Fixing the circuit breaker formula, fixing the spedulation, special education tuition reimbursements, all of those. Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, all right. So in that spirit, um, I will motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Motion's been made. Seconded. All in favor? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, everyone.